Certain statements, but maybe tomorrow there are political changes. And then unceremoniously, where then they're trying to promote some other agenda. So example of this is Iranian nuclear program. One administration was forcing through one type of solution. Then came another administration and then they rolled back on this. And how can you work in this? Where are the anchors? Where are the guarantees? Are these the rules that they're talking about? Why is this all happening? Why is nobody concerned about this? It's because the world strategic thinking has been replaced by corrupt interests, not even of governments, but certain groups. It's the politik. Something that is rooted in the in history and historical development. And if everyone is guided by this, I believe that there will be much fewer conflicts in the world. And a lot of the a lot of these interactions will become much more rational because each civilization, other civilizations, and they're not trying to impose their will on them. I've read the report that was prepared by the club for today's meeting. And it said that everyone is trying to understand the image of the future. And of course, this is understandable, especially for intellectuals in the age of cardinal changes. When things are changing dramatically, we need to understand where we are going, where the world is going. And of course, the future is created today in front of our eyes by our own hands. And when we see this gigantic important processes, it's important, it is difficult to forecast the result. Whatever we do, life will introduce its own corrections. However, we need to understand what are we going towards? What are we trying to achieve? And she has got this understanding. First of all, we would like to live in an open, interrelated world where nobody will try to create any artificial barriers to development of any nation. It has to be a barrierless environment. We want the diversity of the world, not to be, not just to be preserved, but also encouraged. Imposing any will of to another country of how to live and how to feel, it has to be forbidden. Only real cultural diversity can ensure balance of interest. Number three, we are for maximum representation. Nobody has the right to rule anyone on behalf of somebody else. We need to see decisions to be made at the level where they are most effective. And it's only those who are interested in these decisions that need to participate in this. There cannot be one person deciding for everyone. It's those who this decision can, who's concerned with this decision. Those are the parties that need to be participating in creating that solution. So the interests of everyone have to be reflected. We have to free international relations from block, block approach, from the colonial heritage. We're talking about indivisibility of security. We are talking about the fact that you cannot ensure somebody's security at the expense of somebody else's security. We have to get rid of arrogance, complacency, and we should stop looking at others as second, second class citizens or second class people. This age of exploitation is in the past. Countries and nations are clear about their capacity and their abilities. Everyone has to be ensured access to the means of self-development and any attempt, any attempt to limit this has to be, has to be considered as an aggression. We are for equality. We see that nobody wants to be subjugated. Nobody wants to be dependent on anyone. Nobody wants to be dependent on the richer countries. And this is, this is quintessential. These are the principles that we want to stick to. And we are inviting everyone to follow these principles. Dear colleagues, Russia has always been and is is one of the countries that is open to cooperation. And we are, we are going to oppose very strictly to those who want to impose their will. And we believe that pragmatic approach and common sense will prevail. And multipolarity and the multipolar world will be established. And at the end, I would like to thank the organizers of the forum for thorough, high-quality work. And I would like to, to express my gratitude for your attention to every participant of this forum. Mr. President, thank you very much for such detailed explanation of general conceptual matters. Because at Valda Club and other forums, everyone is trying to understand the framework that will, will replace the existing framework. And we, we are quite successful at understanding at what is not going to be there. But we're not quite clear about what is going to, to be. And in addition, maybe as a follow-up of your presentation, this important aspect of civilizations and civilizational approach. So this was said in a conversation with one of the states, state leaders of the United States in Novogorovka. This was said as a joke. I'd like to again emphasize that Russia is the largest country in the world in terms of territory. But if we say seriously, we speak seriously, then of course, we know that there are many Russians living all over the world. And Russian, Russian language is one of the official. In the same way as no other civilization has any boundaries. If you take India or China, how many representatives of China live in other countries or Indians? And they, they interact very well with each other. And if this is a natural interaction, if this is a friendly interaction, if it's aimed at. So civilization is not territory, is people for you. That's correct. There'll be lots of questions about Ukraine, our actions in Donbass. First of all, first of all, are to do with defense of, of people, of our people. Can you characterize special military, special military operation as a civilizational conflict? You said it's not about territory. I don't know what kind of civilization is being defended by those who are on the other side of the frontline. We are defending our traditions, our culture and our people. Okay. Because we moved on to Ukraine straight away. I think in Spain, they have a large event. Vladimir Zelensky went there and a number of other important people went there. They're discussing the question of support, continued support of Ukraine. We know that there's a, there's a situation in, in United States where there's a bit of a delay because of the crisis in Congress. And Europe is thinking that then maybe they have to take on that support. What are we expecting from this? We are expecting at least some signs of common sense in terms of whether they can manage this or can't manage this, we have to ask them. I don't see any problem for them managing it, managing support. The problem is to expand the production and the amount of money that is being spent on the war and on continuation of this conflict. And there are of course problems and that are clear to this audience. They're well known in the U.S. There's a, there's a little hiccup, a little glitch of technical nature. And so there's a problem with the budget. There's a huge budget debt and you have to balance the debt. And the question is how you balance the debt at the expense of supply of weapons to Ukraine? Maybe, or maybe you cut the social costs. Cutting social, social payments is something nobody wants to do. Because this is how opposition parties establish themselves and strengthen their position. But ultimately, they'll find the money, they'll print the money. After COVID and during COVID, they, they printed 9.5 trillion U.S. dollars. Wouldn't be a problem. It wouldn't be a problem for them to print more money and just spread it all over the world and create food inflation. As for Europe, the situation is a bit more complicated. In the U.S., we see the growth of economy. We've seen that over the number of, over the last period, 2.4%. In Europe, things are much worse. Over into 2021, the growth was 4.9%. And this year is going to be 0.5. And it's at the expense of the southern, southern countries, Spain and Italy. We spoke with an expert on this. And growth in Spain and Italy is to do with growth of prices of real estate and also tourism. And in other economies in Europe, there's a stagnation. There are in deficit in terms of production in Germany, minus point one. In Estonia, I think it's minus three. Holland, Austria, they've got negative trends, especially negative trends in terms of industrial production. If it's not the catastrophe, then at least it's a very, very difficult situation in terms of chemical production, metallurgical production, when what I was alluding in my speech. So the burden on the population of European countries is growing. So this is the data from European statistics. We see that the quality of life is falling in Europe. We see that the really income is reducing by 1.5%. Can Europe support or they can't? Yes, they can. At what expense? At the expense of further worsening of economic situation and also worsening of the quality of the Europeans. But our, our budget cannot be stretched indefinitely either. Are we managing? Yes, we are managing so far and we will continue to manage. Of the second quarter, we, we saw the surplus of 660 billion rubles. And at the end of the year, we will have a certain deficit in the region of 1%. And in the following years, 2024, 25, we are hoping to keep that deficit in the region of 1%. We've got a record low unemployment, 3%, and it's stabilized. What's very important is a key issue, maybe we'll come back to it again. But I think it's very important, that fundamental thing for our economy. Naturally, we have a structural change in our economy. We were receiving certain imported goods from European countries. The same way as in 2014, when there were certain limitations imposed on purchase of certain European agricultural products. We were forced to invest in development of internal agriculture. Yes, inflation went up, but we managed to, for our producers to increase the volumes. And you know, today that taking all agricultural goods, we are self-sufficient completely. In the same thing is happening in, in industry. We see that the main growth is coming from processing industry. Oil and gas income has fallen. However, it's still a 3% growth. Non-oil and gas income in processing industry is plus 43%. So this is optics, electronics. We have to do quite a lot in the area of electronics. But all of that together, put together is giving us a growth of 43%. We have restructured logistics. We have got transport machine building. So we have plans that occurred after the introduction of the sanctions against us. And we have begun a new stage of development using a completely new base. This is very important. What's important to us is to keep that trend. We do have problems and it's to do with shortage of workforce. And what follows out of this, some other issues. However, we see a growth in real term income of population. It's falling in, in Europe. Here we have a growth of 12.5%. So even take accounting for inflation, 5.7% growth in terms of. But the, the bank is, is thinking about measures to, to negate, to reduce these problems. Some people will say that this is militarization due to militarization of the economy. Would they be correct? So we have increased costs in terms of defense, but not just defense, defense and security. And they doubled approximately. It was about 3%, now it's about 6%. Defense and security. But with that, I'd like to emphasize that. I said that already and in the third quarter, we've got a surplus in terms of budget, 660 billion. And there will be some deficit at the end of the year, but it will be around 1%. So this is quite a healthy economy, healthy budget. So to say that we are excessively spending money on, on cannons and we've forgotten about butter, that's not correct. I'd like to emphasize that all plans that we announced earlier, plans of achieving strategic goals and all obligations that were taken upon the state, they are being fulfilled in fully. Thank you, this is great news. Mr. President, apart from the conflict in Ukraine, we'll come back to it again. In the events of the several few days, the events in Caucasus. Jean-Michel, he said that Charles Michel, the chairman of the European Council, said that Russia has betrayed Armenian, Armenians. You know, we say that, you know, anyone else's cow can speak, but your cow should keep quiet. As we say. I'm sorry, I interrupted. Is it the end of the question? See what's, what's been happening and what has happened recently. After well-known events and after the collapse of the Soviet Union, we know that there was a conflict and they were ethnic conflicts between Armenians and Azerbaijanis. And they began in Sumgait and then they went to Karabakh. And it has led to a situation, not Armenia, but Karabakh has put under its control Karabakh and seven adjoining regions of Azerbaijan. So this was about 20% of Azerbaijani territory. And this was going on for many decades. I'm not going to, you know, open any secret. Over the last 15 years, we've been offering our Armenian friends to, to compromise. So to return five, five regions to Azerbaijan and leave two with them. And that's, that's how they could keep the territorial connection between Armenia and. No. This will create certain threats to us. And we were saying, look, Azerbaijan is growing, economy is developing. This is an oil-producing, gas-producing country and they've got over 10 million population. Let's compare potential while we can, while we have this opportunity, we have to find a compromise. We are confident from our side, we will conduct a meeting in UN Security Council. And we, we can create this natural Lachinsky corridor. And we can guarantee the safety of Armenians living on this territory. And they said, no, no, we can't agree to this. What are you going to do? We're going to fight. Okay. So ultimately, it has come to military confrontation in 2020. I proposed then too, to our friends and colleagues. Aliyev, I think, will not did. But I'll say that at some point, there was an agreement achieved that Azeri military would stop. And honestly speaking, I thought that this was resolved. This was resolved and I spoke to the Armenian side and they said, no, they have to move back from that part of Karabakh where the Azeri forces were present. And I said, what are you going to do? Again, they said, we're going to fight. I said, listen, in a few days, they will come, they will come behind your lines. What are you going to do? What are you going to do? We're going to fight. Okay. And everything turned out to be the way it was going to turn out. Ultimately, there was an agreement with Azeris that after Shusha line, the military action will be stopped. There was corresponding statement signed in November 2020 on halting the military action and introduction of peacekeeping forces. And then the next important point is that the legal status of our peacekeeping forces was based on that statement of November 2020. So there was no status of peacekeepers arising ultimately. So it was pointless to sign this document without Azeri side. They, they didn't feel any need to sign, but, but the whole status of, of these forces was based on this document. And the rights of the peacekeepers was only to, to keep an eye on the ceasefire. So our peacekeepers did not have any, any other rights and do not have any other rights. Only witnessing or overseeing the ceasefire. And that's it. And this unstable situation continued for a while. And now the respectable Mr. Michel in Prague, in Prague, in the autumn of 2022. And with oversight of Mr. Michel and President Macron and Schultz, leaders of Armenia and Azerbaijan got together and they signed a statement, statement out of which flow the fact that Armenia has recognized Karabakh as part of Azer, Azerbaijan Republic. Moreover, the heads of delegation, Armenia, Armenian delegation, they directly called the territory of Azerbaijan, stated it in, in square kilometers, which included Karabakh. And they emphasized they, they recognize sovereignty of Azerbaijan, Azerbaijan, you know, the territory of, of the Azerbaijani Soviet Republic. And Karabakh was part of Azerbaijan at the time. So in essence, there was a key question that was a question about status of Karabakh. When Karabakh, when Karabakh announced its independence, nobody recognized its independence, including Armenia, which was strange to me. But they did not recognize independence of Karabakh. But then in, in Prague, they recognized that Karabakh belonged to Azerbaijan. And then at the beginning of 2023, they repeated, they repeated the same thing at a similar meeting in Brussels, just between us. Well, maybe between us is a strong word. We weren't told about this. I, I knew about this from the press. And Azerbaijan always believed that Karabakh was part of their territory.
Inspiration doesn't come when you wait for it. I'm a creative consultant and I draw my inspiration from my workspace, which is why I've chosen this one with my.
Has changed in essence its position. And after the meeting, President Aliyev came to me and said, look, you see, everyone recognized that, recognized the fact that Karabakh is ours and your peacekeepers are on our territory. So even the status of our peacekeepers has changed after it's been recognized that Karabakh is part of Azerbaijan. Our military, your military is on our territory, he said. Let's, let's negotiate the status on bilaterally now. And Pashinian confirmed, he said, yes, now you have bilaterally to agree the status of this military. So Karabakh was gone. Whatever you say about this, this was a key issue, the status of Karabakh. Everything was, was, was circulating around this question over the last decade. And it was resolved by Armenia. Karabakh passed on to Azerbaijan. And so this was the state, this is the position of, of Armenian state. What do we have to do with this? What, what, what can we do? Everything that happened in, in, you know, in the last couple of weeks and cutting off this Lachinsky corridor, all of that was inevitable. After sovereignty of Azerbaijan was, over this region was recognized. It was just a question of time. It was just a question of time when Azerbaijan was going to re-establish constitutional order there as part of, of their state. How can you react to this? How else can you react to this? Armenia recognizes what, what do we have to say? Do, do we say we don't recognize it? This would be nonsense. So I think it would be incorrect for me to talk about the nuance of our conversations. But what happened in recent days or recent weeks, this was inevitable. This was a consequence of what had been done in Prague and Brussels. So Mr. Michel and his colleagues needed to think. So Mr. Michelle and his colleagues needed to think when they were, when they were trying to persuade them. I don't know whether they were trying to persuade them, uh, when it looks like they did. When they were trying to persuade Pashinyan to take that step. They should have thought altogether about the fate of Armenians in Karabakh. Maybe at least they could write something down, uh, what is expecting them in this situation? Maybe some order. Of integrating Karabakh into Azerbaijani state. Maybe, maybe some order of establishing or ensuring their rights and so on, or safety. Nothing is of, of that nature is included. It just says that Karabakh is part of Azerbaijan. What are we supposed to do if Armenians have decided that themselves? We've used everything that we had in terms of legal means in order to ensure humanitarian part of this. You know, that people, our people, they were protecting the Armenians of Karabakh, our peacekeepers. And we were providing humanitarian support, medical support. We were ensuring their exit from the. And if we come back to our European so-called colleagues. Maybe they should send some humanitarian aid, you know, to, to help these poor people. Who had to exit their lands from, from Karabakh. Maybe they'll do this, but generally that we have to think about the long-term fate of these people. Is Russia ready to support these people? We were supporting them. We had people dying there for protecting, covering them. And ensuring humanitarian support. You see that, uh, the refugees came to the camps of our military peacekeepers. Uh, women and children mainly, they came to get protection. And of course, Armenia, um, is still our ally. There are certain humanitarian issues and of course, we are prepared to discuss them. And we're prepared to provide support and help to these people. But I've just explained to you how these events developed in, in brief. This is the essence. Another nuance in this relation and the. Those who were managing things in Karabakh are being removed now by Armenian state. Vardanyan, for example, one of those who is well-known in Russia, he refused the citizenship. Can we call upon Azerbaijan to, to have some humanity, humanitarian approach to this? Um, President Aliev ensured me, kept ensuring me that he would ensure security and rights of Armenian population, population of Karabakh. But now there are no longer Armenians there, they just left there. It's maybe a thousand, the heads of, of Azerbaijan. When all these issues of territorial integrity have been resolved for the country. I'm hoping that they will take a humanitarian approach, a very human approach. Colleagues, please. Any questions, please? Those who want to answer, ask any questions? Thank you, one of our veterans at the forum. Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, very dear Mr. President, I am very happy to see you once again. October, uh, conference. Is devoted to the. Uh, October, uh, a conference will be taking place in, in Beijing. And it's, uh. It's about the initiative of Eurasian cooperation. And, and it will follow from certain agreements that you have, or principles that you outlined with, uh, Chairman Xi. We have, uh, we have come back to this topic many times. And some people are trying to, so a seed of doubt. That our project of Eurasian cooperation. And this one built one way. Maybe these are conflicting, uh, conflicting projects. These are not conflicting projects. No, it's the opposite. We believe that one project is supplementing the other. What is happening in, in relation to China and Russia? And maybe this has got to do more with Russia and with China. This was happening long before the events in Ukraine, where certain partners started to introduce various sanctions. And at some point, this was just turning into some, uh, trade war between, uh, between China and the US. And they affected the logistics. We are interested in creating new logistical routes and China is also interested in that. We see that the trade volume is growing. We're talking about, uh, north-south routes. And we see that China is creating, um, routes through Central Asia. And we are interested in this. We are interested in supporting this with railways and roads. And all of that is the subject of our negotiations. And this is number one. Secondly, uh, all of that is supported by the real sector. We are supplying necessary goods to China. China is supplying certain goods to us. And we are establishing such chains, logistical chains and production chains, which, which reflect the, reflect the objectives of the. Objectives of, for China that were determined by, um, Chairman Xi. And this also is to our benefit. One complements the other. I'm not going to list all the projects. There are many of them. And you know, we built a bridge and then there's a logistical hub. We are developing these, uh, relations in the field of real production. All of that is the subject of bilateral, bilateral negotiations. And also these are the subjects of multilateral conversations in the area. I'd like to emphasize this again. I would like to point out that all of that work was not aimed against anyone. This has got, uh, a, a creative basis, positive, um, uh, positive nature for, for us. Us, for China and generally for the world. Thank you. You are obviously correct. There's a certain contradiction between the frameworks that were created by the winners in the Second World War in 1945 and the conditions that have changed in the world as of today. 1945, you've got one situation. Today, you've got a completely different situation. And of course. These. Legal norms need to be changed in accordance with the changing world. So we can, uh, have a different attitude to, to this. We could say that United Nations and modern international law that is created on the basis of the statutes of the, um, United Nations have become obsolete and they need to be removed and something new needs to be created. But then of course, there is a danger that the existing system of, of international law will be removed and there will be nothing else replacing it and there will be an overall chaos. And in any case, there's a chaos, but. But, uh, sending, but, but, but just abolishing the statutes of the United Nations without replacing it would lead to, to a disaster. So we insist on changing the international law on, uh, reflecting the change situation in the world. And in, in this respect, countries that are. Countries that are gaining weight in the international affairs. Um, just because of their potential. Uh, they need to be invited to take part in this. And, uh, what countries are we talking about? We're talking about India, 1.5 billion population. Seven, over seven percent growth of economy, uh, uh, economy. Seven point four, seven point six, if I'm not mistaken. This is a giant. Yes, there are many people who need help, support, but nevertheless. They've got high technological expert is growing at enormous rate. It's a very powerful country and it's growing stronger and stronger under Modi. Brazil in Latin America, huge population, huge influence, South Africa. How can you not take into account their opinion? So the weight in, in making decisions on, on the international agenda has to be reflected. And there has to be a consensus, this is a complex issue, but it should not destroy the existing, uh, the existing system, but I think we are, we, we have to be moving in that direction. So we believe that the existing international regime is still there. Well, it's not completely destroyed. Well, the thing is, if we talk about the first years of United Nations. Mr. Gromeka, our foreign, uh, Mr., uh, Mr., our Foreign Affairs Minister. He was called Mr. No, because Soviet Union used to use its veto very often. But then that allowed to prevent conflicts in our recent history. Especially. This was, uh, current in the first Yugoslavian crisis, when without any sanctions, they started to bomb Belgrade without any pity. They even, uh, they even hit the Chinese embassy there. Where was this international law? And they said, oh, no, that there's no such international law, it's obsolete. Why? Because they wanted to act without any reference to it. And then when Russia started to take certain actions, they started, oh, they started to say, oh, this is, uh, horrible, Russia is violating international law. Unfortunately, there were always attempts to adjust international law to, to their own needs. This is not great. This is, this is very bad. And my concern is, is only that if this is abolished completely, then there will be no anchors, nothing to, to base ourselves around. But, but we need to change those because the world has changed. I'm one of the veterans and founders of the club. And I'm, I'm very happy after 20 years. We would say that it's much better now than, than it used to be. Uh, thank you very much for your participation. It is for more fun, I'm not sure. I think it's quite a bold statement. Yeah. Well, it may be fun for you, but not so much for me. So beyond. Russia, and now we know that there's a question being discussed here. I'll formulate it in this way. Um, do you think that? Our nuclear doctrine, do you think it's obsolete now? I think it's obsolete and I think it's even, hmm, it, it's, uh, not. Not suitable to the current events. Uh, it was created in the olden days and it doesn't work in the current situation. Do you think, do you think that we need to change our nuclear doctrine and reduce the threshold? And. So this containment, um, um, containment, uh, approach is, is old. So they're directly staying, they're very brazen, our opponents, they're directly stating that because they are, because you've got this doctrine, um, you know, we're, we're going to continue this aggression. This is one question. Even when we win one way or another in Ukraine. I think the West will be going through very difficult times. There'll be new centers of power and there'll be new difficulties. We will need to put back that fuse into that nuclear weapons that was holding, uh, everyone back. Today, the West is trying to remove that fuse, forgetting all the fear and, um, forgetting all the precautions. Do you think we need to change our policy in that? I am well aware of your position. I read some documents, your articles, your remarks. And I understand what you're feeling. I'd like to remind you that in the Russian military doctrine, there is, uh, there are two. There are two reasons. Um, detects and informs that this is, uh, that, 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 um, Russia is the target and this happens within seconds. And knowing this information that there's an attack being launched against Russian Federation, we respond to this aggression. And I'd like to assure everyone that. we respond to this aggression. And I'd like to ensure everyone that today, the response would be completely unacceptable for any potential aggressor. Because from the moment of the start of any rocket, from any point in the ocean or any territory, in response, there'll be so many hundreds, hundreds of our rockets that there'll be no chance for survival for any of the adversaries. And this would be done in many directions, could be done in many directions. The second reason of using such weapons is the threat to the existence of the Russian Federation, even if only conventional weapons are being used. But in case where the actual existence of Russia is being threatened. So these are two possible reasons for using nuclear weapons that you mentioned. Do we need to change this? Why? You can change anything, but I don't see any need for this. There's no such situation where something was threatening the existence of the Russian state. I don't think that any sane person would think about using nuclear weapons against Russia. Nevertheless, your point of view and point of view of other experts, people who are very patriotic, who are very passionate about what's going on in, within the country and around the country, those who are worried about what's going on at the front line in Ukraine, we understand all of that. And we are following very closely your point of view and we respect it. But we don't, I don't see any reason for changing our concept. And our potential enemy knows about this. It knows our capabilities. Another thing is, for example, I hear that there are calls to start testing nuclear weapons, to come back to testing of nuclear weapons. Here's what I'd say here. United States have signed a document, a corresponding document on banning the nuclear tests. And Russia signed it, signed it and ratified it. United States signed it, but did not ratify it. Now we practically finished the work on modern strategic armaments. I announced, announced this several years ago. We have conducted the last successful test of Buryvsnik. It's a rocket of global reach with a nuclear load. We have, we have finished our work on Sarmat, which is a super heavy rocket. The question is that we have to simply go through certain bureaucratic procedures to complete this. And we have to move on to its mass production, production and putting it on military duty. And we will do that within a very short period of time. As a rule, experts say that new weapons, we have to, we have to make sure that the military payload works without fail. And we have to test. And I can't, I'm not prepared to say whether we need to test it or not, but but I would like to reiterate that behaving in a mirror, kind of mirroring the actions of, of the United States, you know, when we signed and ratified and they signed but not ratified, we can behave, mirror their actions. This is a question for our Duma. In theory, we can recall that ratification. And this would be quite sufficient if we did that. In the West, the people stating quite openly this position that the support of Ukraine, active support of Ukraine is connected to the fact that Russia has been responding in a, not, has not been responding convincingly to the escalation. I don't know whether it was convincing or not, but start from the, starting from the beginning of this counteroffensive, as it's so called, just from the 4th of June, Ukrainian military have lost over 90,000 people. So these are sanitary and irreplaceable losses. Almost nine, 1,900 armored vehicles. And we have our own understanding of how things are progressing. We understand what we need to do, where we need to add things. And we are confidently moving towards achieving our goals. And we will achieve these goals. We will realize those objectives.
So we, we have a letter for you, which we hope you will, you will read. And we hope very much that you will see that we are, we have addressed this to you as friends of Russia. Indeed, we found ourselves also in a bit of a quandary because we do not agree with the position our dear friend has taken. But we also remember how much we have learned from his formidable knowledge of Russia's history and his formidable commitment to Russia. So we just appeal to you that you take a personal interest in this case. Thank you.
You know, I don't, I don't have the details of who Kargaliski is, but of course, I will, I'll accept your paper and I'll look into it and I'll react to this, I promise. As for your question, we haven't agreed, we haven't agreed on you asking this question, but I was expecting it, to be honest. Moreover, I took this information about what actually happened. This is not just an ordinary event for us. I'll remind you that this division where that Nazi was serving, Ukrainian Nazi that you mentioned, was created by Hitler command in, on the 28th of April, 1940. Nuremberg Trial, not us, it wasn't us yesterday or it wasn't us today. Nuremberg Trial, Tribunal, announced that Galicia Division of SS criminal and responsible for genocide of Jews, Polish and other peaceful population. And this was a decision by International Nuremberg Trial. And I would like to remind you that it was independent prosecutors and judges that were making this decision based on the, based on the data that was provided by prosecutors from various countries. So that division was announced to be criminal. I would like to remind you, I took this information, that paper on purpose. So what the speaker said of the Canadian Parliament, he said, today in this, in this room, we have a Ukrainian Canadian veteran of the Second World War, who was fighting for independence of Ukraine against the Russians. I am proud that I could say that he is a hero of Ukraine and hero of Canada. And we are grateful to him for his service. First of all, if the Speaker of the Canadian Parliament is saying that during the Second World War, this Canadian or Canadian Ukrainian or Ukrainian Canadian fought against Russians during the Second World War, he can, he cannot be ignorant of the fact that he was fighting on the side of Hitler and not on the side of his own country, Canada. Or he was collaborating with the Nazis. In any case, he was fighting on the side of Nazis. Let's assume that he did not know this. I'm not trying to offend the feelings of Canadians. We are respectful of people despite everything. If he doesn't know that during the war, it was Hitler who was fighting against Russians and Hitler and his helpers was fighting against Russia. If he is not aware of this, he's an idiot, then he just did not do well in school. He just doesn't have a elementary knowledge. But if he is aware that he was fighting on the side of Hitler and he's calling him a hero of Canada and hero of Ukraine, then, then he's an evil person. He's a squanderer. So this is, these are the people we have to deal with. So these are the people we have to deal with in some Western countries. What's also important here is, so he said that, the Speaker of Canada says that he's fought the Russians. And then he now continues to support the Ukrainian military fighting against Russians. So he placed effectively on the same side, the, the, those who collaborating, were collaborating with Hitler and those who are fighting with Russians today, he put them on one side. This just emphasizes the fact that one of our goals in Ukraine is to denazify Ukraine. And what that means is that it, that means it exists there. The Nazis exist there. And so our objective is to denazify. And of course, what looks completely repulsive is that everyone is applauding this Nazi, especially the President of Ukraine, who's got Jewish blood. He is there standing, applauding a Nazi. Not just, not just somebody who, who just follows that Nazi, Nazi ideology. It's somebody who actually killed people with his hands. So German Nazis created this Galicia, Galicia Division in order to kill the civil population. And this is what is being stated by Nuremberg Trial. So about 150,000 Polish people were killed and Russians, of course, gypsies were not even counted. They did not even count them as people. So they said, in the region of 1.5 million Jews were killed in Ukraine. Just think about that figure. What, is no one aware of this? Did not happen? Everyone knows. Everyone is aware. Was there no Holocaust? And when, and when the President of Ukraine is applauding somebody who was killing the Jews with his own hands, is he trying to say the Holocaust did not happen? This is repulsive. But what they're saying is that all means are good as long as they're fighting against Russia. All means are good, acceptable, as long as they are used against the fight, in the fight against Russia. So they have this desire to, they, they, I understand they have the desire to win on the battlefield and achieve the strategic defeat of Russia. But can you do this at this cost? Counting on not just us here in the small circle here, the Valdai Discussion Forum, we're talking about this. The, I'm hoping that organizations and forums, those who are not indifferent to the future of humanity, they should form their opinion about this and express their opinion about this. Thank you. Gabor Stier, I saw you somewhere and then I lost you. Okay. I'm from Hungary, Gabor Stier. Mr. President, I'm not going to ask you this time what is going to happen to Odessa. However, in Hungary, there, a lot of people are asking what is going to, how we're going to call the neighboring country. Oh, you, last time you asked about this. Okay, I apologize. Mr. President, I know that you are interested in history. And for this reason, I would like to come to today's reality from this point of view. If we talk about history, we know what significance for development of Russia had the opening of the window to Europe and the European part of Russian identity. Of course, Of course, uh, Europe is in decline at the moment and it's doing everything. Uh, you're, they're doing, uh, but it's difficult for me as European. Um, but it's difficult for me as a European to hear that we should bomb with nuclear bombs, um, some European cities. What does Europe mean to Russia at the moment? What does Europe mean to Russia today? Is Russia going to turn away from Europe completely? Do you think that it would be a mistake to close that window? And if we are talking about history, the new, so the new Russian textbook, um, raised some big questions, especially lines about nineteen fifty six, which describe what happened as some kind of, uh, as a kind of, uh, color revolution. Do you also believe that that was not a real revolution? Do you also agree with some comments that withdrawal of, uh, forces uh, from Central Europe in nineteen ninety one was a mistake? I know that in Vadivostok you said that, that the, um, bringing tax in nineteen sixty eight and nineteen fifty six was a mistake, but if this was a mistake, how can you also think that withdrawal of military mistake? Do you think this is a question? I think this is a, a topic for dissertation. You said that you were not going to, uh, you said that you were not going to mention Odessa, but you mentioned it. I'd like to say that Russia is, uh, sorry, Odessa is a Russian city, maybe a little bit Jewish, but let's not um, discuss this i- if, if, if you wanted to do, discuss a different topic. First of all, in terms of, uh, window to Europe, you see, our colleagues talked about this, the world is changing and you know, climbing through the window here and there and back and, you know, tearing your trousers is not the best idea. Why do you have to climb through the window if there are other doors? This is number one. Second, Russia is undoubtedly the civilization code of Russia saying is rooted in Christianity. But we are not going to impose this if Europe doesn't want this. We are not closing this window. And you said, do we, uh, do we feel regret or we don't feel regret? We are not closing the doors to our communication. It's the Europe, it's Europe who is, uh, um, fencing against us or creating a fence against us, barrier. It's the Europeans who are creating this barrier to their own detriment. I said this already and I'm going to repeat this. United States economy is growing by two point five percent and it, and, uh, Europe is in recession, already in recession. And certain European leaders who are not, who are not very positive, positive to, towards our country, they are stating the truth. They are saying that, that the, um, the, uh, the stability of Europe was based upon cheap energy from Russia and Chinese goods. And of course, they've got very talented, um, um, working people and that's, that's of course, uh, there. But then there are certain key factors of success that Europe is, uh, refusing. I mentioned this before, sovereignty has got many vectors, many dimensions. I always repeat this. I always say that Russia cannot exist as a non-sovereign state. It will just cease to exist, exist. It's not just a matter of, uh, military security. It's also about other elements. What happened to Europe? Many European leaders. I hope they're not going to blame me that I'm, I'm, I'm trying to criticize somebody. Europeans themselves are saying that Europe has lost its sovereignty in this economic, um, but we, we see that, that many experts have, um, have stated that since nineteen forty five, uh, Germany has never been truly an independent state. What does this lead to? See if you provoke United States. The United States provoked, uh, Ukrainian crisis in two thousand fourteen. They clearly understood this was a red line. We told them a thousand times and they, they still went on. And now they got this current situation. They needed this conflict. I, I don't think it was by chance as a result. Europe who's lost, uh, the Europe who's lost, uh, significant part of its sovereignty to the United States, they had to follow United States into this. They had to follow their, um, policy. They had to shift to the policy of sanctions against Russia. They understood that this was playing against them. And now they're buying this energy from Russia, uh, from United States. A significant part of that energy from the United States, thirty percent more expensive. They've intro- introduced restrictions on Russian oil. What is the result of this? It's not as obvious as with gas, but result is the same. They've reduced the number of suppliers and they started to buy from a, a smaller number of, a smaller pool of suppliers at a higher rate. And we are selling our oil to other states with a discount. You see what's kind of happening? The competitive ability of the European economy has dropped and the competitive ability of of their, uh, main competitor in terms of economy, uh, the United States has grown. And other countries as well, Asia, they've grown in their competitive ability. So through their own actions, as a result of losing part of their sovereignty, they had to take decisions that were playing against themselves. Why do we need a partner like this? Of course, they're not completely useless. But I'd like to point out that we are significantly withdrawing or moving away from the declining European market and we're increasing our presence in, uh, many other growing markets, including Asia. At the same time, we are connected to Europe by centuries of connections in terms of education and culture. All of that, I'd like to reiterate, is based on Christian culture. But even here, Europeans are not, uh, making us happy very, uh, very much. They are trying to, to, um, get rid of their roots. They're just removing their Christian roots without any pity. So we're not going to close any windows or doors, but we're not going to try to get through th- those doors or windows with force. If they want to work, of course, we will work with them. We can talk a, a, about this for, uh, endlessly, but I think these are the main points. As for, as for the color revolutions of nineteen fifty six and, and the history books, I, I'm not gonna hide, I have not read that part of the history book, of the new history book. And also the withdrawal of forces, uh, or, or nineteen fifty six. Back then, many Western countries have, um, s- s- stimulated or encouraged, in, encourage certain problems that were happening in Hungary and, and so on. They were preparing militants that they were then, that were then, uh, sent there. But, uh, I think it's difficult to call this a color revolution. But of course, there was a internal basis for that protest within the country. I think that was obvious. But then again, I don't think we should use today's, um, uh, to, today's definitions and apply them to the middle of the the last century. As for the withdrawal of forces, I am deeply convinced that it makes no sense you, to suppress the internal trends within a particular country using military. Suppress the trends of the country trying to achieve its priority objectives, including the European countries. Um, there was no sense keeping military in those countries if the people of those countries did not want to see this military on their territory. However, however, how this was happening, on what conditions this was happening, in what way, that raises a lot of, uh, questions. A lot of our military were resettled into a, a, just an empty field together with families. That's not normal. As for obligations or legal consequences, they were not formed, they were not formulated by the Soviet, uh, leadership. Western states did not take any responsibility for that. Of course, they promised not to extend NATO to the East and our partners are not, are not, uh, denying this, um, in person. However, they say, where is the paper? There's no paper to confirm this. Okay, we, we promised it, but it doesn't, doesn't mean anything. We also know that even if there was a paper, the, it doesn't mean anything to them. So it's just the questions, what needed to be agreed is, is the question of security, ensuring security in Europe. Maybe ensuring some new structure of that security in Europe. Uh, Egan Barr had some proposals to create a new system of security in Europe, which would include Russia, United States, Canada, but not NATO, together with everyone for Eastern and Central Europe. And in my opinion, this would have resolved a lot of issues that we have today. He said at that time, he was a very clever old man. He said that, he said that, uh, you will see otherwise everything the same, but it would be occurring closer to Russia. It was a German politician. And, but nobody listened to them, to him, uh, nobody listened to him in the United States or in Soviet leadership. And we, uh, witnessing exactly what he said. So the withdrawal of forces, yeah, of course, it was pointless to keep the forces there. However, the conditions of withdrawing them, this is something that needed to be discussed and what needed to be done, maybe to create a situation which, uh, would not have led to what we see today. Have I answered your question? If I forgot anything, please remind me. W- we talked about Germany, maybe, Stefan Kutt.
Uh, in, uh, in, for Deutschland, parties which are deeply rooted in a racist environment and, um, they don't have any sympathy for the Russian people, like one can, one can assume. And, uh, they don't have any idea or sympathy for the idea of Russia as being a multi-ethnic people, which you just stressed in your speech. So I would like to know, um, what do you hope for? What do you, what does your government hope for from such contexts? And what are criteria for having, uh, contacts with parties like that? Um, and can you understand that anti-fascists in Western Europe see that as a sort of contradiction to your politics, of your politics?
Uh, извините, пожалуйста, я хотел бы вас попросить. I'm sorry, I apologize. I wanted you to maybe specify a bit more. What do you mean that when you talk about fascist powers and fascist, uh, parties and their attitude to, to Russia? Maybe, maybe state this very directly.
Of, uh, the AfD, Björn Höcke, for instance, is deeply rooted in the fascist movement in Germany. He, he went to demonstrations with Nazis. So this is really confusing to anti-fascists.